That that would have.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Other than that, the only other concern, kind of going back to this citizen concerns, we are trying to get a public statement, statement out message to our kids and bike safety when crossing Pine Street. We've had, we've had multiple talks with kids that don't get off their bike and walk. And they just, and it's scary that they just, they don't look. They're just flying by expecting people to stop and sometimes that doesn't.
I'm sure all the preschools have like a whole course on that.
Yeah, well, we did, you know, in the past for the PACS.
Thank you.
There's a bike camp and we'll have deputies to help with bike safety and we need to get back into that as well. But we're thinking about putting out some type of message and the summer's coming to an end. School's starting here in August.
Yeah.
Just try to keep kids safe.
Yeah, South Tyler near the library is also.
It's a disaster.
But it's, it's a way the cars apart and it's hard to see.
Yeah, a lot of kid traffic back and forth.
It just doesn't matter sometimes though. Sheriff and I talked about this a couple of times. I mean, I walk my bike across.
You still.
And I still almost tagged, I mean, I just, you know.
And again, just trying to form a proper use of the hot lights. I mean, you already got to use them.
Yeah.
That's what they're there for, so.
I wonder if you could do something with the middle school. I, I, one of the biggest problems I see is the, the e-scooters, e-bikes. And that's kind of that crowd. If there could be some program with them to help inform their students.
Yeah, when we get to, when the teachers have their in-service, we can bring that up to the principals and superintendent and see. We can get in, have our school resource officer do some education on that too, just safety stuff.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm quite sure that those, I have a couple that are high school, but I, I don't think they even realize that they have to. Yeah, I mean, they do, they do now.
Sure.
Because I've told them, but I, I don't think they, that most kids know that you have to use the light.
Right.
Yeah. We've never cited anybody for that as liability wise, by she, you know, she's on the losing end. And yeah, in, in more ways than one, so, yeah. Okay, I will entertain any questions and then I'll digress to our grant.
Any questions?
Do we have cameras with those, the Hawklights intersection?
So we have a camera on South Tyler and Pine Street.
Pointing at.
Facing northwest. It covers, it covers that whole intersection.
Cause I mean, obviously with the increased traffic, I just saw a bunch of people that were not waiting for everyone to get all the way through the crosswalk. I didn't know if it was one of those things where like, you can clearly tell.
Oh, I see. Man, it is even for us, it's difficult because we can't actually, like, we can't see the lights. Like, when do they go from yellow to red?
Yeah, and it's not like a stoplight where you know, okay.
Yeah, but we have, you know, and we'll, and if we can't, I mean, we'll still, we'll contact people and say, hey, I'm not, you know, this isn't an infraction, which is making you aware when it turns yellow, you need to start slowing down and prepare to stop.
Okay.
But that's, yeah, it's difficult to.
Meanwhile.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
And, you know, to enforce an infraction. So, I mean, there's, there's sometimes the people are halfway through the intersection, the people fly by, that's, you know, that's pretty obvious. Yeah, we can cite for that.
Yeah, it's, it's just tough because we're all, I mean, we all live here, obviously, but you see a lot and you're just like, what am I supposed to do?
It is, and, you know, hot lights aren't, you know, aren't prevalent as you would think. And if you know a lot, especially when we get people from out of country, Canada, I mean, they have no idea what a hot light is or how it operates. And so I think, and, you know, we'll stop them in the warm, but their responsibility, I have no idea what that was or meant. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, and let me know if you guys want me to be there whenever we actually have a quote.
Yeah, I think if we can get a quote and it's reasonable, I think we, yeah, I think we'll probably just move forward.
I had, I had good feelings about it. I don't know if that's true or not, but we'll see.
All right, thank you for being there. Thank you.
Apologies. The rules that put my father over there is call me, who's at home. Don't know what's going on. Anyhow, thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate that report. Any other questions for the sheriff? Nope. All right, next item on the agenda is going to be our contract for services presentation. And I'm just gonna go by the order that we have in the public agenda. So first we'll go with Kaylee, Children's Discovery Center. There she is.
Amy, Mayor, Town Councilman, my name is Kaylee Miles, I'm the Director over at the Children's Discovery Center. We are in our summer months and almost the end of our summer months. This summer, we have forty-nine students, ages two through five, with almost, like, seventy-seven percent of them are full-time students that operate. They're between Monday and Thursday and then quite a few will still on Fridays. We gotta just figure our whole, like, our whole time kids is Monday through Thursday. We have finally wrapped up construction on our addition. So this past year, we added, for the school year, we added an additional toddler class. Well, as those toddlers move up, we will take an additional toddler class again this year. So I've got fifty-eight students enrolled for the fall already. I still have a few more spots to take a couple more kids, another ages two through five. So I'll have sixty-two toddlers, twenty preschoolers, ages three and four, and I'll still have only twelve free day students. Just because as those kids move up, our numbers will move up. So the following year, there will be six students in there on a daily basis. We continue to serve meals three times a day. We serve breakfast, lunch, and an action snack. So on average, we're serving about thirty thousand meals a year. Does that have any questions for you?
Awesome. Good. And to summarize, your, your request is for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes.
That's it?
Thank you.
Easy.
All right, next up is Nicole and Ruth from the children's learning side.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, thank you so much for letting me share some information tonight. Anna Paulfielden, I'm the Executive Director of Children's Learning Center. Diane Gregory, who is normally the face that you see up here representing our organization. Unfortunately, had a family care plan before she knew this date, so I'm here in her place. And so I just first wanted to start by thanking you for your continued support of the organization. The town support is just integral to our work. CLC this last year was able to serve twenty-six children in our preschool classroom and additional seventeen children in other settings for special education services. As I'm sure you know, CLC is the sole provider of early childhood special education and early intervention in Pinedale. So we serve all of those kiddos from birth through five who have any special education needs. We also see children in our half-day inclusive preschool classroom. And we also hold a state TANF grant, so we're able to subsidize tuition rates if a family is not able to pay to attend when they would like to. And so we feel very lucky that we're able to serve such a wide cross-section of the community. We employ seven highly qualified staff members, those are certified special education professionals in our program. And we see children in all of the other preschool settings here in Pinedale. As you may, oh, we also provide free screenings to all of the children in Pinedale. So this last year, we were able to provide a hundred and twenty screenings to children in Pinedale alone. And it's our goal to be able to screen all of the children here because early intervention, the earlier it starts, the more success that it has. And so we have a great team that goes out into all of those early childhood settings and does free screenings. This last year was a tricky one. We have a state grant that helps fund those special education services. And the model really isn't sufficient to provide the services that we need. And so as you may have seen, we provided an updated budget between when we initially submitted all our information in this meeting. Because when the supplemental budget didn't pass this year in Cheyenne, it was a cut for our program, which equaled about fifty-five thousand dollars just for the Pinedale program alone. But you will also see that last year, we unexpectedly received a decrease in county funding. And this year, we were approved to have a more expected amount going into this next year. And so both of those changes are reflected in this updated budget, so they can see it. So you can see we do still operate, as I said, in our Pinedale program. And that we look to family foundations, look for philanthropy and that sort of thing to make up the difference. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the program.
Yeah, you actually raised a really good question that I meant to ask Kaylee. And I'll come back to her in a second. But I was just wondering if you could also, I mean, I'm assuming you have reserves as well.
We do have some reserves.
Any other questions and questions for? CLC. Yeah, sorry about that loss of funding down at the state.
Yeah, we continue to advocate and, you know, and educate. So if any of you have close friends in Cheyenne, you know, we would love your support. These are really vital services and I don't know if everybody understands what a huge long-lasting impact they have. And can really decrease the amount of money it takes in school districts and other, you know, public education.
It's the consistency that matters, right?
Yeah.
Consistency's big and so whenever you have that situation going on, it's not, it's not easy on you guys.
It's not easy, it's not easy to predict. And so we're hopeful that we're looking forward to better funding your statewide going forward. But as you said, it's not consistent, so it's anybody's guess at this point.
Indeed, it is anybody's guess. Right, any further questions? No? Great, thank you.
Great, thank you for your time.
Can I just come back real quick? Can you tell us how much you made, how much the county granted you?
This year?
Yeah. From the county? Sorry, I'm gonna be asking everybody that question as well. Just to the previous point mentioned, the town's lost money as well. So I think one of the things that you haven't noticed, and I'll just state it here, is that, you know, we generally have a policy of awarding a certain percentage of our revenue towards the contract for services. And so our revenue this year is down as well. So we are looking at some difficult decisions and choices in front of us, just to be clear for everybody's sake. So apologies. All right, next is, is it Happy Endings? It's on my spreadsheet, but I don't know if that's what it's named. It is Happy Endings. Amy? Yes.
What portion of your revenue do you give to contract services? I know you can start out with a question, but it's just me.
Where the three percent? Yeah, three percent.
I'm Tammy Cresson.
That's a negotiated number that I've, that we've fought for, so three percent.
At this point in time, we, last year, we have brought in about a hundred animals from all over the county. A couple here and there for the town of Pinedale, six, I believe, is what we have from the town of Pinedale. This year, we're on task to bring in a hundred and forty animals. And right now, we're a little bit over sixty. So we're, we're in need of some help. The facility that we have, and you guys approved our zoning, we're putting in the kennels as we speak this week. So I really appreciate that, that's great. But I don't know if there's specific information that you want from me at this point in time. So I think everything is in the letter.
Yep. Can we just clarify real quick, just as a point? Cause I think, especially since we kind of have a working relationship, are we staying Happy Endings? Did we change that name?
We're gonna change it this fall, this winter.
Here, okay, I'll skip it there.
It will still be here.
Right.
It will be high elevation animal rescue.
So I started having that name in my head and I was like, I wanna make sure I use the right name here. To be clear, you know, we have this working relationship, so when you say there's animals coming from the town of Pinedale, we've got to be clear that that's not actually the governmental town of Pinedale.
No, there's only been one animal that we have taken from Michelle.
Gotta make sure of that.
The other five were surrendered from folks who live in Pinedale.
And there's quite a few. Also, how many cages are you setting up?
For kennels?
Yep, kennels, I'm a kennel.
Right now, we're setting up two. You have approved three for us. So we're gonna see how two works and.
That's great, I'm glad.
I'm pretty excited.
Any questions for Tammy or here? Nope, 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 anything else?
I do.
Yes.
In, in working with Michelle, one of the reasons we like to do a lot of the surrenders and intakes is so that we can spay and neuter animals. Cause it's, it's a huge problem that we see all over the county. Is there any way that you would be a mentor to spay and neuter animals, animals before you adopt them out?
I think we've had that conversation.
We have.
And I've said no.
Well, it, it depends, but that's something I thought I'd bring up to the council.
So that's part of the problem, just for council, is this Tammy and I have had this conversation for several months, is that we have a number of people who actually want to adopt an animal that's not spayed or neutered. So that's kind of where we look at it, is we're trying to get an animal out the door. Cause our job is not really to be, you know, adopting animals, thank God for you guys. We're trying to take on the problems that come in. And so our spay and neuter process is, we give them the shots, obviously. But we've actually had people who would rather not have a spay or neuter dog. So to make it a policy on animals is much more complicated. Certainly on any animal that comes in and then walks out the door back to the owner, that's very complicated, so.
Right, no, 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 I'm just talking about the ones that you have over five days.
Right.
Would you ever consider?
I mean, I think, I mean, what we have staff, staff and myself as mayor have talked about is, if it's an issue where we think it's worthwhile, absolutely. But I don't think we would make a policy if that makes sense. So it just becomes more difficult when we have animals in, in our kennels that we need to get out and people are specifically looking for. And we might have a really nice border collie that someone comes in and somebody's like, ooh, cats on, we wanna breed that animal, right? So these things happen.
Let's talk about cats.
Okay.
Cause cats seem, cats seem to be the biggest.
Don't talk to me about cats. I have five little kittens, I got rid of the last two today and my lovely cat went out and got pregnant again, so.
She'd like to spay her.
We were planning to, yes, but she flipped out the door.
I think you're making her point.
No, I know, she's going, she is going to get spayed. You know, my, my take is I, you know, I, I get nervous about making a policy about that. But I think, you know, discussions with staff and our animal control and Ed as well, it's like, it's one of the things we're definitely willing to consider on doing.
I just think it'd be a great community service and, I mean.
Cause our animals that are going out are generally not going back out to the, you know, they're going out to specific individuals who want an animal, for example, and so.
Right.
And then that adds the cost of spaying and neutering unless there's another organization that wants to do that.
Well, and I have given Michelle the little more, and I don't wanna take up any more time. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that you would consider that. I'd be happy to provide information. I know I'm on board a local memorial as well.
Yep.
If there's something that at least we can do.
Yeah.
So.
I think we've had that conversation, cause that, that actually the relationship that makes even sense on a, we used to do that back in the day, so.
Right, and I will be back tomorrow morning to get your cat.
Well, she's pregnant right now. She's probably gonna have ten, come back in a month.
Eight months, I'm gonna be at the doorstep.
Very cute.
Very adorable.
Ignore the fact that I'm allergic to cats, but anyhow.
You do know, though, that they can produce seven years, six hundred and forty thousand animals.
This one will not.
So I'm hoping to do it, right? Can we put this in a minute?
The mayor commits to like staying his.
I, I do wanna say, I think that we should have more discussion about this issue because I, I'm, I'm wondering where these people are who want a pet that's not spayed.
Yeah, we can have that discovered, put on the end if you'd like.
A, a lot of it's misinformation, they believe a dog does. Neutered is not gonna be as loyal or as protective.
Well, I can testify against that, from the dog we got from Happy Endings.
Local memorial looks out to, and in their brochure.
Yeah.
You know, to correct a lot of that misinformation, but I don't wanna take up any more time. If there's any questions you have for me, I'm happy to entertain. You guys have my email and my cell phone number, and if that conversation does come up, I'd love to be a part of it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next. Is Mason, Carla?
We really appreciate all of you guys having us over here, so it's been, it's been great. And this year has been a really good year for us as well. Our numbers are down, different from what I have on the paper right here. We actually have five families moving away this year. But, well, since the beginning of last year, we lost five members this year and ten total in the last, beginning of last year. So our, our enrollment is down a little bit. When it happens in the summertime, we really don't have the access to the schools and the counselors to be able to recruit. And we haven't been recruiting anyway, people, they, we just, we're a million people come to us. And in conjunction with that, we have fabulous herd, four head of horses, they're all old guys. They are amazing, but they're really, really difficult to replace. And so we can't overtax them by having too many, too many riders in our program. So right now, I think we're really a good steady even keel to have a fantastic program. And I'm excited, we have two instructors in training coming on, it's part-time, she's on eternity leave right now. We got her going this spring and she'll be back this fall. And then we have another program coming in, it's called Equine Assistant Learning. And we have an instructor that's in training for that, and that's all unmounted programming, so it's not adaptive riding. And that is really based on self-discovery and life skill development for, for kids. We have opted to open up to adults, so we are, we have a couple of adults in our program right now. They're small, small women that fit in the same pack that we have. And we could have the same amount of volunteers that we have and use the same horses. We get to where we have to have larger participants, then we need bigger horses, bigger tack, bigger volunteers, more men in our program to be able to help, help do that. So right now, we do, we are taking adults, it's amazing, it's been fun. And that's been, been a really neat part of, part of our change. And along with our change is we are changing our, our name from Therapy and Horsemanship to May City Equine Assistant Services as well. And that is standing up with the industry standards and we're offering more things, more just, just therapeutic riding and adaptive riding. So with all of that, we are really excited about our future. Right now, we've got a neat little spot, Mr. Schroeder has allowed us to, to ride in facilities just outside of the Soda Lake Road. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. It's a wonderful spot for us, it's out of the wind. We do have a feature that we can get out of the, get out of the weather, if the weather, we do start getting rained out, we can go under that little shed and we can continue doing annual lessons and not have to be in the staff. So that's been really good. Our biggest struggle is finding pasture. We are still just, my horses are bouncing all over the county just with, for green blade grass and somebody that's willing to allow us to stay there. So that's kind of been our biggest hurdle this year. But with that, other than that, I feel like we've done really great. This is our fourteenth season doing therapeutic riding lessons and it's neat. I'm, I'm really excited that we're able to offer some more programming services. We did, for the first time this year, ask that our participants help raise money. So we are asking them to help provide some of their lesson fees. We don't necessarily want this to come out of their pockets.
Right.
And so we are asking them to help us fundraise. Our biggest fundraiser is the golf tournament. If they go out and help find sponsorship in the golf tournament, then that goes towards their, their lesson fees. So that's how we wanna do that. We don't want our, and we still, even if they aren't even, we do that, we do have scholarship, even we have backers and donors who are willing to help provide those lessons for those riders if they, if they are unable to, to raise that money. Any questions?
Did you receive any funding from the county?
We only get a small red board. We just get small red board, I think, is all we get. And, yeah, I asked for a horse, but we can't get that. But, no, we don't get any consistent.
Yeah, so you've been getting a slot, yeah. Feel like that's.
Never have. We, we got startup money, we counted first thing.
Feels like it's a good thing for the county, right? But, all right, any other questions for Carla? No? All right, thanks Carla, thanks for all you're doing. Appreciate it. Hey, next item is the Pinedale Aquatic Center. I don't. It's on another page or something.
Yeah, I'm here over here at the Pinedale Aquatic Center, Deanna, in our creation supervisor there. So this is the first time in this, um, so this last school year, hackwalled over ten thousand youth, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. We sold sixty-three youth passes with thirty-three, thirty-three of them being for town residents only. And so that was about fifty-two percent of just town residents. Our biggest admission is through daily admission, so those are the ones that we can't necessarily track for, just by the day. Let's see, we have over twenty youth programs that we run, many of which start right after school or we offer them on days that there is no school. So that helps fill the gap for working families and helps keep kids connected and active in our community. For this coming school year, we are going to offer a Friday program for the no school Fridays. So we'll offer, we'll have twenty spots available for kids from about seven forty-five to two o'clock. So that'll be this year. And then we have our summer day camp. This year, we have about sixty kids, twenty-three of them being town residents, and so thirty-eight percent of our town residents. And then also this year, we did receive national funding from the National Rec and Park Association for a grant. It's a two-year grant cycle and it's gonna have the Swiss and mentoring programs at PAP with our current athletic programs, camp programs, and then expanding to hopefully middle school, high school stuff for actual.
Great, congrats.
So it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, it is a big deal.
Yeah.
Good job, you worked hard on that. Hey, any questions? Yeah? County funding?
We get, um, rec and money, so you received about twenty thousand dollars and that went towards equipment, not.
County funding, yeah.
Yep.
It's gonna be a bigger need this year, the Fridays.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, next up is Pinedale Preschool, and I think we have Judy here, right?
Yeah. Ally had senior pictures to make, she couldn't make it.
Senior, oh.
Yeah, all right, hard to believe.
I know, but I'm just, it's July, right?
You have to get those done fast, quickly, or if they hook up and like they're due in like November or December to get them here. It's, it's pretty. So for those of you who don't know me, Judy Wiggins, and I currently serve on the board of directors at Pinedale Preschool. I'm in like a year and a half in, so I'm still learning all the ins and outs of this. So this year, Pinedale Preschool served twenty-one students during the two thousand four to two thousand and five school year. Nineteen of those children are town, are residents within the town of Pinedale. Thanks to your guys' generous support, we were able to provide scholarships to five of those students ranging from twenty to forty percent of our tuition. It is, makes a huge difference for families in our community, especially when everybody is tightening belts and sadly, pre-K seems to be something that families tend to start cutting. As we all know, that's, pre-K is incredibly important, but sadly, it's something that families start cutting when belts start tightening as well. We currently have sixteen children enrolled in our summer program. It is our second year offering a summer program. And they range in age from three to seven years old, so we do have some kindergarteners going into first graders there as well. This coming school year, we're going to be offering Fun Fridays for elementary aged children to help families continue to adapt to the changes in Southern County number one school schedule. And this is designed to, again, help those working families who might face some challenges with childcare with the new calendar. And of course, we will still provide that Friday for our regular students as well. Ally adds that we truly appreciate the ongoing support and partnership from the town and we really could not provide the level of high-quality education here without your help as well. And thank you for standing with us and your continued dedication to the children and families of Pinedale. So any questions for me?
Yeah, I saw that you've got ninety thousand from the county, so since that's my perpetual question that I'm asking everybody.
Yep.
That's great. Any other questions? I didn't realize you were doing, I saw the kids over there, so that's fine, I live next door.
Yeah, I, I live too far away, you see them all the time, on Wednesdays, the library.
There's a summer program.
They welcome over to the library for all of their programming in the summer, they are doing some really awesome things.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rendezvous Point. Yes?
We, we are a council.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. First off, I wanna thank you all for your support, the past and continued. We desperately need it when it comes to in Pinedale for our state federal funding, and that's what we utilize this town's funds for. We continue to serve our growing Southern County senior population with their transportation needs, homemaking services, health and wellness programs, and their nutritional services. And then, like many agencies, we're currently grappling with funding shortfalls this year for sure. But the state is helping us through that. And one of the exciting things that we do have, they approached us to do a pilot program, which is, which is a caregiver support program. So we're going through the training for that program right now, that will allow us some additional funding. And so we're looking forward to that. With that funding, there will come some additional staffing too, so that's something we'll be looking at as well. Every dollar that we receive from the town directly translates into improved services and resources for our aging population, so we just greatly appreciate it. And any questions?
I see you received $205,000 from the county. Is that typical, or is that...
We put in for $210,000, and we haven't been directly notified as to what we received yet.
Okay.
I wasn't last year.
Oh, you don't think. 24, 25, yeah. All right.
It's flipped 90, yeah, sideways in there.
So you requested 200, okay. That hasn't been approved yet.
We did not increase our ask from last year, just because whatever money sponsors it.
Yeah, right. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thanks, Deanna.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks. All right. Judy, next. Safe. Easy for the... Right?
So, mine is, I'm the new director of the St. Export. I fully point you in, so as far as the past figures that I got, I'm not really familiar with all of those. I can tell you since I've been here, we have a new director and a new advocate. We're very passionate about what we do and have been going through a lot of creating all over the state. Since I've started, I'm kind of shocked how much this program is needed in this county big time. And we do appreciate all the help that we have gotten in the previous past. We set up with the same that we've got for this year. I will say that we are helping out four to five people a month. About 90%, maybe a bit more, people that are calling in, we are able to help with the state of federal and local funding. We're here to make sure that you know how much this is important to us. You definitely need a voice to take care of everybody in the county. It's so important and helpful in getting us through this. And if there's any questions or anything, we're trying to establish a good a good relationship with the town and law enforcement as well. We are open seven to five now, five days a week. I work four of those. My advocate works the other four. Of course, we overlap as well.
Right.
And then we have our volunteers that help us now. Couldn't do it without our volunteers, so...
How many volunteers do you have?
We have three wonderful volunteers right now. We could use a few more, but if there is anybody, knows anybody that wants to do this kind of thing, but you have to go through a training, of course, under the confidentiality of all staff, so...
And then the five cases that you see a week, are they generally... I mean, is it proportional Pine Dell, Russell County type of thing, 50/50 or something like that?
Well, I think something in the water in Big Piney. So Big Piney is our biggest call. But we do get it from here as well. We have not many out of the Big Piney Pine Dell area, but we have helped several here as well. But it's a... It's a job we don't want to do, but it's something that has to be done.
Right. No, it's a hard position, really. It's one of those things. I always ask the director of safety here just to kind of track numbers because I am concerned about these things, so... Okay, interesting. County funding?
You know, I haven't been notified by our county for many years, so... Do what we ask for, and because of me being new and this being due, I just got the statement we had bought last year.
Hey, any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Well, that's it. Okay, excellent. Thank you, everybody, for your reports. I will say, and one of the reasons that we started this years ago, was one, the way the town of Pine Dell does contract for services is that we demonstrate that these are contracts that are beneficial to the population of the town. So you're coming in twice a year is part of that process, so thank you. The other reason, which I'm glad we now have a group that's live streaming on YouTube as well as our own, is that people in the community would just know what you do. And this is extremely important. And, you know, we like to hear your reports mid-year and stuff like that. But we really are grateful for you and your services. You're kind of where the rubber meets the road. You're in those little areas where the loose ends fall. And I think that you who brought it up, like the first thing that goes on people's budget is like pre-K funding, for example, or something like that. So we are grateful because you actually make Pine Dell more livable. So we are appreciative of that, and you increased the quality of life here in our town, which makes people want to live here. So thank you for that. And I'm happy to hear that we have fewer cases going to safe than another town. But I hope it's zero one day. That's what I really want for the entire town. So that said, I think we're done at that point. Presentation's completed. So we do have to make a discussion, but it's not on the agenda for the discussion this time. So we'll have a discussion, and then we'll talk and get into funding. Just to be very clear, we currently counsel a councilman, a woman as well. I think we have a total of 101,000 that was requested of us, and we budgeted 67,500 is what our budget is. And again, that's linked directly to what our revenue is. So I am sorry to say that we will probably give some of you a more harder answer than we would like to. But that said, we are grateful for what you're doing. So is there any other comments or questions from the council? No? If you want to leave, you can leave. Otherwise, we're going to move on to the next items on the agenda. And just for civil government, it's really exciting. Thank you. We'll be in touch, everybody. Thank you. Amy, are you reporting for the papers? I heard a rumor through like my wife, Bill, but...
To discuss the papers.
I know that maybe you was in the room. Not at all. Not at all. I'll just be nicer to you. How about that? All right. Okay, sorry, guys. I'm trying to say the worksheet that they just created. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have in here an encroachment agreement for 1149 Mountain Meadow Avenue, installation of landscaping within the town of Pine Dell right of way. And it's described there. And we have another encroachment agreement with 748 Wilson Street. I think it is fair... Can I make a comment on that? It's fine, okay. We had a service come through the town that was offering asphalt services to many people in the neighborhood. You're not with them, are you? No, you just nodded your head. And none of them got a merchant permit. And they began to actually lay asphalt in town right of ways. Now, some of people have a driveway, and they want to keep on going another 15 feet to the sidewalk. Perfectly reasonable. It'd make sense to have a driveway there. However, nobody talked to the town whether or not you can actually pave there. So we actually had one or two actually paved, which we're going to have to deal with. Then one or two of these actually found out. Michelle got in front of it. Kevin got in front of it. And so that's why they're here this morning, this evening. We don't have a problem with it in general. We just have to make sure that we don't have any critical services. And as we described to all the members, that, you know, if we have to go in there and fix a water pipe or a gas pipe, then we're going to shred that thing, and that's back on me type of thing. Is that fair?
Yeah.
And so...
Any contractors working right away have certain requirements.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. They also have to have like certain insurance and things in place because if they mess up things. So anyhow, if that went around us last week, and that was kind of a mess. And so a couple of our citizens didn't know, didn't know that they should know, didn't even know that maybe that rest of their driveway wasn't actually their property. So we have been picking up, and so that's why you see them in the consent agenda. Abe, I've looked at them. You've looked at them. You're good with these two. And I'm good with these two as well. So I've spoken to some of the owners. But if anybody has a question, or you want to pull it out of consent agenda, we can. Then the third item is the Pine Dell High School temporary use permit for the annual home cleaning parade. A kind of a no-brainer. And seeing as I've been seeing your pictures already, which are probably... I think we're behind schedule on this one then. And then we have the purchase of UV lights. And then software renewal for our SCADA and the South GA Apron additional grant application. This is, we were told that we could apply for some more money, so we are. It's an additional $15,000 there. And then finally, Jorgensen Associates grant application aid. So if anybody has a question, we can talk about it. Without a consent, we can, or I will entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published?
I'll say it. All right, move by Councilman Loftus, second by Councilman Swafford, to approve the consent agenda as published. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Great, thank you. I'm trying to remember everybody's name, and I want to make sure I don't... Connect your first name and the second. Councilwoman, and that counts.
That's a sign.
A little sign. All right, we are now on page, what? 140. Waste water treatment facility, phase one, phase two engineering consultant recommendation. This is for discussion, not actually a vote, I believe. We actually had a really good meeting. We had two good candidates. I will say that Jorgensen showed very strong. They did a fantastic job. And they've actually been involved in this process from a very long time, so they're knowledgeable in the program. And their team was a really great team. So the other applicant was good as well, but this one definitely showed a lot stronger. As you can see in the score, we scored them 92 to 84. So, cold it. Good job. Well done. I saw Brian this morning, so... Honestly, I'll even say it here publicly, I think there should be people who actually come to an interview next time you're a part of it. Because you guys did just such a good job that I think people could actually learn how to do those kind of interviews, watching you guys have it. It was seamless, and we loved how Melissa was geeking out, so...
I appreciate it.
Yeah. So our apologies to the other, but this is our recommendation. We will be moving into contract negotiation, and we'll bring it forward to the council at that point. Good with that, Abe?
Yep.
Yeah. Counsel, any questions about that? Okay, next item is F2. This is a fit, approve a $15 discount on the next water sewer bill for participating customers of the lead and copper testing program. This is something that we do on a fairly regular basis, annual.
Annual basis.
Yeah. It used to be me, but I'm not, I'm not listening anymore. Kept on spiking it. I was the one ruining it for y'all. So anyhow, we just need to prove this for... How many people are we testing it out for?
It's 10.
10, that is, 10 of the other four. So if counsel would like to discuss or make a motion.
I move that we approve a $15 discount on the next water sewer bill for participating customers of the lead and copper testing program.
Also, all right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Boyce, second by Councilman Swafford, to approve a $15 discount on the next water sewer bill for participating customers of the lead and copper testing programs. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next item is 486 South Pine Street bond status. Abe, I'm going to let you lead this one now.
Mr. Mary, council, this 486 South Pine Street is Dollar General on the south side of town. This is a project where they had to build a piece of Charles Street, if you guys recall, of which it was bonded and constructed late last summer, about this time of year, actually, last year. During the construction, there were some concerns. And after the construction, we asked for the concrete test had failed to the town standard portion within Charles Street that the town had tested. We had worked with that contractor, and at that time, we extended the bond to a two-year bond. Let's get through two winters. Let's see if it holds up. Let's see if there's any issues. It clearly did not hold up through the first winter, at least the surface of it. So the town requested a meeting with them, the town engineer, and we had that last week. At that meeting, we looked at the concrete. Overall, the concrete structurally is hanging in there. The concrete was overfinished, and the surface is pretty well all spalled at all. The contractor asked if the town would be willing to go through the second winter to make sure no structural issues kind of show themselves in the roadway. And then at that point, they would like allow top two inches of concrete using the remaining portion for road base and pave over a cap over the road and have it engineered and improved by the town engineer. The town engineer, Matt Bowers, and myself both are okay with that plan. And that's how I would recommend we forward with it. But I didn't want you guys to go two years without my pay and see what comes after.
And we're looking at something like 100-plus thousand versus...
Yeah, so to replace the whole road would be over 100,000. They think this repair would probably be in the $20,000 to $30,000 range, and likely a stronger final product because concrete is a fantastic base material. It's going to be stronger than any road base that can be put down. So we'll be working with them. Everything will be reviewed by the town engineer. And we're only concerned about the portion that is Charles Street. This has nothing to do with their parking.
Yeah.
Their parking lot is kind of their responsibility.
So to be clear, it's like I perused this as well. It's my recommendation. I may approve it, but... Does counsel have questions?
My only question is how well does concrete adhere to concrete?
It won't be concrete to concrete. It'll be asphalt to concrete. It's a very common practice on interstate systems, so I've never done it. And Matt Bowers and I will be making sure that the construction detail and how we go about it is done in a way we're comfortable with, so... But it's not something that's not done elsewhere.
Okay.
I move that we approve...
It does say discussion only.
It is discussion. I don't think we...
Yeah, we don't need it. Okay.
I thought that's where you were going. But I was like, it says discussion, so...
Okay, so we'll proceed with that. Get that renegotiated. Next item, I'm going to declare a public hearing regarding the transfer of a liquor license, specifically the liquor license pertaining to Sophie and Tavio's place to be transferred to Four Peaks Operations. Amy, or Ed?
It's pretty straightforward. The liquor division has deemed their application complete. We have had no complaints.
Ed?
I have to defer to the town clerk on this. I represent the applicants, creating the applicants. So...
That was clever.
A little confident.
It wasn't what it sounded like.
I definitely wasn't. Okay, I don't think there's any problem, which is just some final tip, so... Got to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the transfer of a retail liquor license from Sophie and Tavio's Place LLC, DBA Sophie and Tavio's Place, to Four Peaks Operations LLC, DBA Pine Dell Supercenter, located at 1,088 West Pine Street, pending final approval from the Wyoming Liquor Division for the period of August 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Boyce, to approve the transfer of a retail liquor license from Sophie and Tavio's Place to Four Peaks Operations LLC, located at 1088 West Pine Street, pending final approval by the Wyoming Liquor Division for the period of August 1st, 2025, March 31st, 2026. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Three to zero, one. All right, congrats. How's business?
It's great. It's a turnaround. We're really doing that again.
What kind of fun things are you going to be doing? Come on, tell us. We want the secrets. All right, okay. Well, thank you for doing it. We hope to achieve best. There's no succeeds there, so...
Thank you very much.
My kids were upset when Subway left, and they were like, ah, and so I'm like, okay, something's coming. Yeah, so, great. Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda are department reports. Minnesota Court. That's what it is. Next item is H2, animal control and Minnesota Code enforcement. I'll ask the question since we're here. Six cats impounded, zero returned to owner, one stolen care. The five cats went out where? Do you like barns type of thing, or...
Some were feral. I went to barns.
Okay. It probably would be interesting, since I know that Councilwoman asked that we discussed this at some point, that at some point, we'll ask Michelle to go ahead and give us an annual number on that, with that number of cats. Good? All right, any other questions on that one? Next is Public Works. Includes a lot of waste water and all those wonderful things. Abe's been lazy again. Yeah, I just wanted the employees to get to sit down behind him with a whip, but this time, yeah, motivate him at the office. Actually, have to force him to take a rest, but anyhow. All right, any questions on Abe's report? And then I know Abe always has a few things he wants to make sure everybody's called attention to.
I believe it's Chanley. You would, I think like a month ago, you thought that it might be paved by the end of July. We're just coming up on it, and I was curious how it was looking.
There, so I don't know that they started today. Last staff meeting, I was at Star Trek, it was going... Star Tractor was going mobilizing this week to begin the prep work. Obviously, they're not close. The sewer line is going in now, so there is a large sewer bypass. So those who are on the bypass are, and the bypass mainly affects Shanley, Jade. So while they do, they have to remain there in the bypass. The bypass is operating during daytime hours only and then they're reconnecting the main at night to make sure we don't have water sanitary overflow. But while they're working on that, the tractors are supposed to get to work on, kind of prep for a road on Quartz Avenue. So the project is moving a little slower than I like, but they have, they've had areas and it's mainly from about the old farmhouse, the original ranch house, north on Quartz is a swimming pool underground water. It is quite impressive. So anything they've had to do there, so taking two or three days, like they intend, has taken like two weeks.
And the reason being is probably the infiltration system has got problems on not getting the water out of there.
Just infiltrate. They infiltrated the underdrain.
I suggest we chop down the trees, but that guy.
Choking.
I look back in the neighborhood, I see the daily progress, but I just wanted to check.
It's slow. I will give you that. It is slower than we anticipated. I'm still confident we pay back at some point in August, so.
Cool.
We are, I won't say we're having problems with the state, but the state is being very finite on our RFRs in the rural regulation of what's going on out there. So it is a bit of a task to get money back through the reimbursement portion of this. And I've submitted a lot of these things, so I feel like I've gotten pretty good at it. It's taking two or three reps back and forth with the state right now. So I apologize for the delay in cash flow on some of that, but we'll get it ironed out and it will all be in order. So the South G A apron is complete out there. Likely will be signing final completion in the coming days. With that being said, our, our team has went out and installed the tie downs or at least the first portion of the tie downs, since we did not have those included with the contract. And the Seal Code Mark contractor is following right behind us. They're supposed to start on Wednesday. There will be a couple of days if the runway is closed this week, as we do on Seal Code Mark on the runway. The problem with the Seal Code, or I'm sorry, the South G A apron project is these grants that have now been amended four times, which you guys just approved for the fourth time. The federal government has asked us to shift money here and there and everywhere. And the good news is, is we're getting more money than we were anticipating. The bad news is it's all paperwork and it's all very bureaucratic and it takes time. And our contractor moved faster than the timeframe of what these grant amendments can do through the federal government. So our payout that is being paid tonight is very large, of which we're able to recover all but about a half million of that payout. And the rest of that is something we carry on our books until we can submit the RFRs once the grant and bureaucratic process of these grant amendments goes through. So again, a bit of a cash flow concern and issue for the town. So Maureen and Amy and I have been in touch in making sure that we don't bankrupt the town in the process. Not bankrupt, but we don't bounce any checks in the process of how we go through it all. But it is a bit more complicated than just, you know, normal. I did speak with Rio Verde on the two thousand twenty-five chip seal project. The county just sent out the notice to proceed to HK contractors last week. And so I'm away, final construction schedule, really hoping that that schedule will come out and we will chip seal the avenue before school goes in session, but school is very close and I have heard nothing. So we will coordinate accordingly. So we're about four weeks from the school starting and I haven't heard anything on schedule yet. My guess is it'll happen in August or September. September school will be in session, but it'll be inconvenient and there will be some ways for parents taking kids to school for those couple of days that we're doing, if we don't get enough headshot, so. I will do my best.
We can have, instead of snow days, we can have like chip seal days.
I kind of like it.
Do we have any option for asking them to do our portion before?
We always, they always work with us pretty good in trying to get the town section done. So I think the answer to that, like, will we have an option? Yes. I just don't know when HK is going to be here yet, so.
We're having to do it on the weekend.
They don't want to fight the traffic either. You know, they'd rather get out of the way.
It's so bad.
And the chip seal typically, that's a pretty long pull, but it's a few hours and once the chips are down, more traffic on it, the better.
Yeah.
It can be, you know, if they started at ten, they'd have it done by two probably and that lane of traffic could all be open and everybody could be driving on chips and then maybe do the same thing the next day. So there's other ways we can go about it. Hopefully just get done before school starts. Okay, the hangar project out at the airport will go up into the table for some report next, at the next full report. They're out there doing geotech and surveying this week. And so that project is underway and that design process will really hit the high year in the next couple of weeks and hopefully start getting some answers down there. We have asked Wes and his team to, to slow down enough to make sure we're making a plan for the entire apron frontage to make sure we don't pinch ourselves in any way, shape, form, maximize how much, maximize the usage of the limited ground we have. Let's see. Outside of that, we're kind of waiting to hear on several grant applications that we hear of, which you guys know. So that's pretty much it for the project. Is there any other questions on the projects going on?
Great. Well, thank you, Abe. Good job. Next is the wastewater water park.
If you have questions, I'll answer them, but Spencer does a pretty good job putting some details in there. We'll say Locate's been very busy this month.
Yeah, so seventy-five, that's like how much higher, I guess, than normal is that?
I would say for this time of year, it's probably pretty normal, but you know.
Well, it's a middle.
I don't know. I feel, I, I, I see every single one of them across my email and there's been a lot, so.
Lot of construction.
Okay, next item is the monthly report, parks and such. Forward, again, I'm just gonna let people call up if they see anything.
For the remainder of the summer, you'll see a lot of motion report and stormwater installation, trying to beat the chips that probably got a boom field. That's kind of what those guys are going to be focused on. And hopefully we got everything into do the ball bouts as requested on Pine Street. So hopefully those will be going shortly as well. We are kind of running out of seasonal help. Over the next couple of weeks, they start kind of petering off and we're down to one of these seasonal parks in the fall.
Okay, planning and zoning?
Not a lot to report. It's a pretty quiet week or quiet month in planning and zoning. We've had some general permits come through and a lot of inflighters, but it has slowed down a little bit. A lot of our work has been related to planning and zoning, mainly the developers around town. We got three different developments going on that take time, but for the most part, we haven't seen a lot of new permits or nature. We did have to halt construction on a couple of projects and do a few things. And we work with the town attorney on making sure we follow the proper process.
Okay. Next is the airport report.
Busy couple of months at the airport. Stuff's still trending in the right direction, so.
There's a lot of graphs on this report.
That's a standard report because kicked out a full hundred Dero.
Yeah, it's like one tour.
That report takes me thirty seconds. I'm like, man, I want one of those.
Oh, wow. We were wowed.
Told us.
You just ratted him out on that.
A full hundred Dero tracks every operation at the airport, from everything from the size to how long they were there, who's parked on the ramp, who's itinerant, who's local, overflights, landings, takes off. It's pretty phenomenal and it generates this report monthly. So you can see our mixture of aircraft that are landing. The ones we care about are C one and above. You think heavier than C one is, I shouldn't say that we care about, but those are the ones that kind of trend towards like the classification of our airport, how big is the runway, asset planning processes, it's all based on that side of aircraft.
It's a long report. All right, travel and tourism, H four, page one seventy-eight, for those of you who are. We did have Jim Hamilton resigning, so step down.
Yeah, not much to speak on. Straightforward with the money. Page one eighty-two. We'll start the new fiscal year and see the next.
We're up, so that's kind of good, I guess.
Yeah.
We're off. All right, next item, ordinance and resolutions. We have one ordinance, seven thirty-two, actually, I think it's on second read if I'm correct. We haven't made any changes to this yet, have we?
We, no, we have not.
You know what? Yeah, so.
It's supposed to go to the battery board before we get to the reading.
No, it's the, it's the table.
Yeah, the table, I just didn't want that to be approved as is.
It's, yeah, and it's not, table is not a part of that ordinance. The table is just an illustrative, how they kind of go about it. A discussion, like we're not having a discussion with a couple of people. Trying to find all the people that were involved in our four little houses in discussion. A lot of people aren't on vacation right now, so.
Whoa, go figure.
I know, I know, I knew where you were, so I didn't bother. But anyhow, we're drilling down into that. We'll come back to that. But we do also have some deed restrictions that we've been putting into place. We have two currently that are in discussions and they're generally the same. One's a little bit longer than the other. Ed and I drafted one. It was like, what, five pages, four pages? And we got another one from Lee and it's like twenty.
Probably the standard.
Yeah, we're, we're sticking with the standard and that's what we'll probably present as like, this is going to be our standard one that we would propose. And then the one has a few tweaks and some additions and they're nothing bad, so. But we'll be bringing that to the council pretty soon as well, because we have a couple of these developers who want to start the N O D S. So. Any questions about this? No? All right, entertain a motion for seven thirty-two.
Move that we approve ordinance seven thirty-two on the second read in northern Santana Pine Dale, state of Wyoming, establishing the town of Pine Dale Housing Commission.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Boyce to approve ordinance seven thirty-two on its second read. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right, next item is presentation of the bills. It's a little bit up there.
It's up there.
That's what happened when Abe did the project around here.
Yeah, I saw that and had to be like, where did we spend all this money? I move that we approve the bills for July twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents, paid with checks three one six one three through three one six five five.
All right, moved by Councilwoman Boyce, second by Councilman Swafford, through the bills for July twenty-eight in the amount of two million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents, checks number three one six one three, three through three one six five five. Only forty-two checks is what it takes for two million dollars, everybody.
Most of it was one, right?
Most of it was one.
Takes one check to spend two.
This is like a hundred. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next item is payroll and benefits for the month.
I move that we approve payroll and benefits for July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Moved by Councilwoman Boyce, second by Councilman Swafford, to approve payroll and benefits for July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right, that's it. Next item is going to be an executive session to discuss real estate. There will be no action taken afterwards, so we will probably, for the sake of anybody online, we will probably just end the meeting, we'll end the live stream and then we'll come here. There's no point to sit there for thirty minutes with nobody in this room. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a good week. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I move that we enter executive session. I'll second that.
Moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Loftus to go into executive session for the purposes of real estate. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Yeah, I forgot the purpose of real estate. Thank you.
Good.